I'm going to call the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, May 15, 2017, back to order. We started this meeting in executive session where we discussed collective bargaining in respect to the fire chief contract. We did reach an agreement, and we'll announce that in the regular agenda. As required by open-meeting law, we are informing you that we will be video, audio-taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience wishing to video or audio tape must notify the chairman now. Would you please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello?
Hi, sorry, you're not up yet, but we're connected.
Okay, at least you're here, good.
Who's that? Visigo? He's got a while. Okay, anyone for weekly briefing? Public comment and announcement. I'm going to start this one tonight from the other side of the table. So tonight I have the honor of recognizing two members of the board that will no longer be with us. This is Angelo and Peter's last meeting. I'm honored to be able to present them plaques and recognize them for their service to the town of Harwich and thank them for all that they've done for me. We really appreciate it. With that, I'm going to start with Angelo. He's a selectman from 2008 to 2017, in recognition of your outstanding contributions to improving the quality of life in the town of Harwich. Presented by the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of Harwich.
Am I allowed to make a comment now, or should I hold it?
You can hold it for one minute. Peter's the vice chair, he gets to go first. Next up, Peter Hughes, selectman in Harwich from 1995 to 2004, and again from 2011 to 2017. In recognition of your outstanding contributions to improving the quality of life in the town of Harwich, presented by the Board of Selectmen on behalf of the citizens of Harwich. Now, Tom, we'll start with Peter.
My comment is, our comments are, it's a pleasure to spend these years sitting up here, doing the work of the town of Harwich and the people of Harwich. I think it's important we all recognize the fact that our individual opinions can matter, but we're really representing the citizens and taxpayers of the town of Harwich. And I think everybody who sits up here is working in the best interest of the town. So it's been my pleasure, it's time for some other folks to step forward and assume these awesome responsibilities, if you will, and it is an awesome responsibility, but I've enjoyed every minute of it and have no regrets. So thank you very much for giving me the honor and privilege to serve. Thanks.
I certainly concur with Peter's comments, and I'd just like to add something to them. We do a lot of work and spend a lot of time doing things and projects for the town, but we couldn't succeed in anything if we didn't have the volunteers running the committees that they run, that we didn't have people in the town administrator's office, from the town administrator, the assistant, and Sandy Robinson and Sidell. We would never have an agenda, and we'd never have the list of people who need to be reappointed to committees. So we're not sitting here alone. There's a lot of people who are doing things behind us that make it possible for us to do things. I too would like to thank everybody for allowing me to be a selectman for these years. Thank you.
So next up, under public comment and announcement, I just want to announce that the polls open tomorrow at 7:00 and close at 8:00 p.m., and please go vote. Okay, next up for public comment and announcement, Clem?
Clem Smith, the Harwich Golf Committee. I just wanted to share with the selectmen a few brief thoughts on my part, because Tom Johnson's going to expand on a really great event that we held this past Monday, May 8, up at Cranberry Valley, and it was a function that embraced and interacted with our veterans, and Tom's going to amplify on that for us. He's been my lead throughout his tenure on the golf committee, so thank you.
Thank you, Clem. Good evening. First, I want to thank you because you did a proclamation, and we rewrote it from a home base program that we had several years ago. Home Base is the Mass General, a Red Sox Foundation for Wounded Warriors. At this time, Clem asked me to find an outfit that we could affiliate with for veterans, that we could do an annual program. And so we have the Service Military Golf Association, I'll leave the brochure for you, and it's a group of veterans who have been wounded or come back with PSTD and are disabled. And so badly that some of these fellows have their own carts, they didn't bring them this time. But the fellows that were there all had their own limbs, but they were PSTD. They loved the day. So we gave them this, and I even wrote a four or five stanza poem that I'll be glad to leave with you if you'd like. It was like reporting for duty, to play golf. And the outcome was, we had, if you felt safer last Monday, it was because there was about 250 years of uniform service playing at Cranberry Valley. We had 50 members that paid money so that these 25 disabled vets could play with them. We integrated the foursomes. It was a shotgun. And there were a number of volunteers that donated as well. There was one corporation that donated, it was Peterson Realty. I hope in the future we have more corporations that get involved with this. We intend to do it annually. And what they found is, in the research, that golf is therapeutic for these folks, and they build their own community around a goal of playing golf together. And so let me read to you a couple of responses from, here's one, this is a 20-year vet, disabled. "I want to thank Cranberry Valley staff and members for an amazing day of golf today. For the SMGA New England outing, it was a day I will not soon forget. I'm hoping to go to your course again. The course was in incredible shape, and a group of guys I was with made it a great day. Again, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for today and all your support that you've shown to veterans." Sincerely, Matt Dubek, U.S. Army, retired. And we got a number of those. "I just wanted to thank you publicly." The proclamation, I told them, take it home, frame it, and put it in your man cave. And invariably, these fellows say, "Thank you for thinking of us." Matter of fact, when we did the home base, we had people in tears. These guys would have been through combat. So I want, and just a couple of things. We also set up a corner of honor up there with a notebook and asked these fellows to sign in. And they did so, and we're going to do it annually. And the group is very happy to be affiliated with us. And Cranberry Valley is going to be the Cape Cod Golf Club that when a vet comes back and wants to join this group, we will train them. And once they are at the point where they can get out and play golf, they get a free set of clubs new from tailor-made. So I just want to thank you for that. And I also have a hat for each of you, which I'll bring up, and you can distribute them later. Any questions for anybody?
Thank you, Tom, and thank you for honoring our vets. Any comments from the board?
That's terrific.
Amazing. What a great job, thank you. Thanks for the hat.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm not bringing that up.
I got it, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, public comment and announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was before you about two and a half years ago, or two years ago, and I filed a public records request. And I find it disturbing that the practice here in this town has not changed too much. Most of our volunteers that work on our volunteer boards all use their personal emails. And back then, I was promised that that practice would stop and that the town would be supplying individuals with a town email address so that it doesn't put into vulnerability, if you will, their private emails account when they use them in order to do town business. I understand that the laws under Chapter 66, Section 10, for requesting public documents can be made verbally. However, the state does suggest that you do it in writing. I have filed it downstairs with the clerk's office because I believe that is the procedure. And I think because of the new standard that's been put in place in January, the town has also allocated both the chairman of the selectmen and town administrator to be the recipients of requests, too, from what I understand. So this evening, I would like to hand in a, officially hand in a written records request. And I'm hoping that it's lengthy, I won't read it into the record, I don't think it's necessary, but I'm hoping that the town will do the right thing on this matter. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else for public comment and announcement? Can I get a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda. A, approve the minutes, April 24, 2017, regular session. Two, April 24, 2017, executive session. B, vote to remove William Griswold from Community Center Facilities Committee due to lack of attendance. C, accept the gifts to the Council on Aging gift account totaling $390. D, approve appointment of Robert Aaron to the Council on Aging for a term to expire June 30, 2020. And E, accept resignation of Jeremy Gringas from Wastewater Implementation Committee, Brooks Academy Museum, and Sacquetucket Harbor Development Committee.
Second?
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to accept the consent agenda. I did get a note from the front office that the mail was returned, the letter that was sent to Mr. Griswold about his lack of attendance and about tonight. The chairman of the facilities committee is the one that recommended this, so I'm not sure it changes it. In my mind, it's been quite some time that he hasn't been attending meetings. Anyone have any comments on that? Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to public hearings and presentations, we have a presentation on Visigof Harwich 2.0, it's called. Carol?
Yeah.
Carol?
So you can start your presentation, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Alan Jones, not Danielle Court. I'm one of the three co-founders of Visual Government, and I'm not sure how much background you already had on visual budget, where I should start, or should I dive right into the Harwich visual budget? Can I get some guidance on that?
Give him a quick overview, so that... A quick overview would be wonderful, thank you.
Okay, well, Visual Budget was started as a project in the town of Arlington by Danielle Court. Okay, can you see the screen there? She was a selectman for seven years and really focused on budgets and budget presentation and fiscal transparency. So she came up with the idea of putting up a website to illustrate Arlington's budgets in a way that people could understand it and interact with it. She grabbed myself, I'm the vice chair of Arlington's Finance Committee, and my responsibility in the Finance Committee is to present the budgets to town meeting. And Johan Sonnen, who is the head of a software studio in Arlington that does really great work, and they did the initial design. They specialize in transparency and all sorts of fields. They're focusing on health right now. So Arlington put up Visual Budget. It got a number of awards and a lot of mentions, and other cities and towns came to us and said, "Can we have one of those?" This is free open-source software, as you know, and we said, "Sure, we'd be glad to help you do that." We're all consultants by nature, so we said, "Yeah, we'd be happy to help you do that. You know, we'll have to charge you a little bit for it." And that's where we came up with the Visual Budget Starter Kit, Harwich signed on to. So we have about 20 cities and towns now, including one in New Hampshire, one in Providence, Rhode Island, one in Connecticut, and Virginia, and a couple of other places, that we've put up Visual Budget. We've got a lot of feedback on it. And I believe that Harwich found us at MMA a year or two ago, and he's been working on the data. We put the site up, and here it is in front of you. I assume you can see it. Quick tour of Visual Budget, when you first come into the site, it offers you to take a little bit of a tour, and particularly, if you can, if you put it in your own tax bill, you can later see where your dollars go. So if my tax bill, my property tax bill is 3, 4, 5, 6, and I start the tour, it gives me just some quick ideas about, so this is your yearly tax contribution, a quick tour through things, and it shows, it tries to point out that if you hover over the expense budgets, you can see what, you know, one of your property taxes go to particular departments. And the budgets are split into three different sections, sort of in the general nature of fund flow, revenues, expenses, and funds and reserves. So on the revenue side of it, we have the property taxes, which is the bulk of it for almost everybody around here, local receipts, which, you know, we know has different charges, different fees, motor vehicle excise, taxes penalties, you know, et cetera, et cetera, and then state aid. And you've done pretty well in state aid. Oh, actually, it doesn't go back to 2008. I'm guessing back in 2008, you had a big dip the way the rest of us did. But you can sort of see the general trends in state aid, and revenues in general. So this is, you know, part of the story of your town's budgets. I like to think of Visual Budget as an interactive storytelling tool to help cities and towns, again, tell the story of where's the money come from, how was it spent, and how you're planning for the future. And the presentation that we do is designed to let you see the big picture and then dive down into whatever details or interests to tell the story, and you can also see how things change over time. This feature that we all, it was almost a second thought, but it's become very popular, was this tax contribution feature. So in this person, this household is paying 3, 4, 5, 6 in property taxes last year. 1487 of it went to the schools, 1291 went to various town departments, 140, 150 went to paying off debt. And then if you want to see where things go in the town departments, you can dive into that and see specifically, Public Works was 293, et cetera, et cetera. One thing that we did special for Harwich by someone's request was the golf course. And here we put in this comment that is funded entirely from user fees, not by property taxes. I understand how that's important. And there was another exception, the Harbor Master, again, is funded only by fees and not by property taxes. If I go into funds and reserves, one thing that as a FinCom member strikes me, obviously, is a huge increase in free cash in 2015 and 2016. I'm sure there's a story there, I'd like to hear what it is. But the sort of things that, you know, whatever the story is, we're hoping that the visualizations can make it more easier to understand and easier to explain to the public and your taxpayers. And that's the whole purpose of this. So we're hoping that Harwich, like other towns, can use this as an interactive tool, put it out, you know, as a website, so citizens can go in themselves and look around, generate some questions. We've used it in town meeting to explain the budgets, particularly as things change over time. If you look at Arlington's funds and reserves, we tend to do a big override that builds up a surplus and then drains it off, and then we have another override. And it's really easy to help explain that. Boy, that looks good, the stabilization fund increased a good bit there. Anyway, that's sort of it, and I guess I'd love to hear some questions or things I can show.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you. I'm going to let Angelo, I'm going to let Angelo get back to his seat, and I'm going to start questions with Angelo.
Jamie, you're going to have to repeat that, I can't hear it well enough.
We're just allowing one of the board members to get back to his seat, and we'll start, begin questions with him.
Okay, sure.
I think I was the person who was the pest about how revenue was shown for each of the departments, so I'm glad that has been dealt with. Because I think it's important for people to know, when they're trying to make judgments, for example, about either golf or waterways, that their operating costs are covered by their revenues, and your tax dollars aren't there. And I think this changes that you made to solve that problem.
So Angelo would like to relay to you his appreciation for you allowing for the offsetting revenues that fund the waterways and golf, and he believes it's a more accurate picture of the town's budget.
I think also that there are a lot of other departments that do the same thing, maybe not at the 100% level, but they do the same thing. And the next step is to make sure that they get credit for that also.
So Angelo would like to recommend that other departments, maybe not municipality, but partially are funded from fees, and he would hope that the next step would be to show those offsetting revenues as well.
Uh-huh. Yeah, that was good feedback, and in fact, that's sort of driven some changes that we've made. I would like to show you one that we're working on now. The city of Northampton has done it a different way in that it's still under development. They've split up their budgets, particularly their enterprise fund. So for example, the water budget is separate. So they essentially treat, these are basically enterprise funds, so that the city budget is the overall budget, and then they've split it up into the enterprise funds, that each one has its own revenue stream. Its own revenue stream and expenses. So it becomes really clear that these are outside of taxpayer funding and are fee-generated. So that's another way to do it. In other words, we could, we could put up a separate budget for the golf course, if that wanted to go into detail. So that's, I just wanted to show you, that's another way to do it.
Thank you.
If that would make sense in your case.
Anything else, Angelo?
No, I just, I think directionally, it's a good direction. You just have to figure out how best that you want to...
To what extent can they, can it be broken down within the departments?
To what extent can this be broken down within the departments?
To whatever level you want. I think we can go up to seven, seven layers of depth. Typically, it goes in about four until it breaks into expenses and salaries. The, let me pull up the data that's behind it. And I should point out that, of course, it's all open data, so that any, anybody can come in and pull up the spreadsheet of the data that is behind these visualizations. And if I pull this up, you can see where the visualizations come from and how the, the different levels are shown. Let's see if my spreadsheet comes up. Here we go. So this shows four levels of breakdown, and it can go up to seven levels. So the major ones are, for example, schools, town, retirement, Cape Cod Commission, insurance, debt service, et cetera. And then, say, within the town, it's broken down into Public Works, Health and Human Services, et cetera. And then each one of those can be broken down, say, Public Safety, and Animal Control, ambulance, fire, police, and then these broken further down into salary expenses, capital outlay. So it's really dependent on the data that's provided, how deep you can go down into the levels of detail. And again, it all depends on the story you want to tell. I know in our case, I like to show that the Finance Committee, Finance Committee is on here, in Arlington, the Finance Committee would cost this taxpayer about 15 cents, which is why it disappears. But then I answer your question. You know, we go down about seven layers, but I don't think anyone's gone down that deep.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else?
When, when will this be fully up and running?
When will this...
But anyway, I should, I should remind you, that's all totally up to you. Yep.
In terms of the...
Sorry, go ahead.
Totally up to the board in terms of the level of detail?
Yeah, or your financial people, whoever is presenting, who is preparing the data. So if you had something that's six or seven layers down that's very interesting, you could do that.
When will this go live?
Whenever you tell us. I simply take off the password, and then we'll, we'll make an announcement through our website and Facebook, and then, you know, you would make an announcement through whatever channels you have. But all I have to do is take the password off.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything.
Peter?
I think I take responsibility for the one who stumbled across this at MMA two years ago, and would have been interested in getting to this point ever since. But I would ask our finance director during the course of your interview with this board, if I remember correctly, you were, I think you were pleasantly surprised that we were actually looking at something like this. And I would ask, now that you've had a chance at least to look at this and maybe explore it a little bit more, what are your thoughts on this? Do you think it's going to be useful? Do you, do you find it helpful, et cetera?
Okay, so just hold on, Alan.
Okay.
I find it as a useful tool. I think it helps, in a different way, communicate the budget of the town to the folks, the taxpayers in the community, and it allows for comparability to other communities. And Alan, I don't know if we'll be able to download that data all of the time, or will it be locked?
Anybody can download the data anytime they want to. Uploading your data is, of course, will always be password-protected. You update it whenever you, you want to. But anybody can download the data like I did anytime they want. It's open data.
And so it's extremely easy to use, it's very easy to update. I updated the 2018 budget. And so just, you can download the data, you can compare it to other communities or like communities, or see where your differences are. I mean, I think it's a useful tool for the public.
Is it as simple as taking our Munis accounting system, basically, for the budget, and loading it in, or do you have to make adjustments?
Well, I was hoping to be able to import it, and that's what I keep wanting to work on, is to be able to just take, take, download a file from Munis and then import it right in, but I wasn't able to do that yet.
Okay. In my opinion... In my opinion, moving forward, we should get this up and running as fast as we can just to start getting feedback on it and let people use it. I mean, there's probably an error or two in there, I would guess, but that's the only way we're gonna really know is get some experience and feedback from folks looking at it. And I imagine the first ones will take a look at it, the department heads, and say, hey, are these numbers right? And, you know, what am I, what's the public seeing out there from my department? So, I think we'll get some feedback pretty quickly. But I encourage moving forward this, I think it's a great visual, you know, presentation of the budget and the details.
Great, thank you.
So, one of the Board of Selectmen was appreciative of the, the level of detail that's provided here and thinks it will be very useful for the public.
Good, thank you. One of the things we try to encourage is to make sure that this is structured in the same way that your, your other budget presentations are, same words, same breakdown, same hierarchy, just to avoid confusion.
All set.
In other words, you, we, we don't determine how the budgets are broken down. You do that.
Okay. No more questions? No, thank you very much, Alan. We have no more questions.
Okay, well, I thank you very much for your time and support a visual budget. And again, I'll just be waiting to hear from you when to take off the password and start the publicity.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bye-bye.
Board, wanna take an action on this now?
Yeah, I was gonna recommend, I mean, you know, we've, we've had this in the, in the can for, you know, a year and a half. I mean, do you want it to go live and let's get this out and going.
I would agree with Pete, I would agree with Chris.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion based on the presentation and the feedback of head, board members and administrator and the Finance Director that we remove the password protection on Visigo for the town of Harwich and let us go, let it go live and let folks in the general public use it.
Second.
Can I just ask, ask you a question? I, I agree with that, but I just realized they may not have the fees that are collected by the recreational department. And if they don't, it's gonna make the rec department not look very good. So, if they don't, you should put a little note on the bottom that it's not included.
Okay, any other discussion?
That's all.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next up under Old Business is a Town Administrator's Performance Evaluation. I put this back on this week just because we put the backup documents into the packet so the public can read it. They were not in there last week. Any comments from the board on this discussion? Angelo, you all set? Everyone all set?
No, I just wish we were at a position where we could go forward and vote on the end, end situation of this, but I understand you, we don't have that ability.
Peter, anything?
No, I mean, I, you know, I think I said in my comments that, you know, this is a favorable review. I didn't see everybody else's comments on that, but I think, you know, last week we discussed a little bit and it is a favorable review. My comments at the very end of, what I said was, hey, if the board doesn't want to go forward with, you know, the Town Administrator extending his contract or whatnot, they ought to figure that out quickly and move on. If you're gonna extend it, let's extend it and, you know, let's keep this thing going, quite frankly. So, I, I think at that, you know, I look forward to you sitting in the audience or watching on TV or whatever shortly, having the new board as is constituted, whoever's here, to take up Chris's contract extension and move forward, so.
Thank you. Janelle?
Well, I think we're, you know, we've all agreed that he, the, the salary adjustment will be made because of the positive performance review. But I guess I do think that it is important going forward that the new board is the board to negotiate the new contract because it'll be a three-year board with two new members. So, I would support that decision.
Julie?
Yeah, I'm comfortable in, in bringing it to the new board and I think we're getting close. I think that, you know, we've agreed that things have certainly improved and so hopefully, you know, we can figure this out after the election.
I'd just comment that it was an above satisfactory performance evaluation, merit increase was given. I think Chris did a good, good job with goals and objectives in the end, a better job with communication and, and look forward to taking this back up. Okay, moving on to the Action Item Register. It was put in the packet, more as an update. Is there anything, Charlene or Chris, you wanna report on the Action Item Register?
Yeah, just to, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity. Thank you also for the favorable performance review. It is certainly appreciated. In terms of just a couple of things, I'm just gonna highlight that we updated, we did update that the visual software, as you just saw, has been updated to the Harwich version. And as the board just voted, now we'll, we'll change that to, to launched and out. As soon as we're able to get it on the website and make that available, we should be able to do that fairly timely. On the next highlighted one, on the, the various building issues, we did update that. Alborough House, we had updated previously that. We were denied funding by CPC. Administration has agreed to look and see what other options are available. On the Bank Street Fire Station, that was the former Bank Street Fire Station, an appraisal's been done, a pre-21E has been completed and a risk assessment has also been completed. We will draft a RFP. I did have a meeting the other day with the, the town engineer. We will gear that RFP consistent with the, the will of town meeting, if you would, in terms of offering that property with the intention that it be for open space or conservation purpose. So, we will draft something for the board to review. So, that, that will be coming. On the old recreation building, we have had some discussions. We're working with the Finance Department to see about the, the finances that the town has received. And then I have had a meeting with the Building Maintenance Facility Manager to just review that element of what, what the, contractually, we had obligations to do certain work, to find out what the status of that work has been. On the West Harwich Schoolhouse, we did send out recently a RFP and we did not receive a response. So, that we will also, I think, have a discussion internally from a zoning perspective to come back and see what elements or potential elements could go in that location. And finally, on the Harwich Middle School, we are still in the process of adhering to or putting into place the two-year plan to convert that Harwich Middle School into a cultural center. So, I think one of the things we should do is, at least internally, we'll provide a couple names. I think we need to stop calling it the Harwich Middle School and start calling it as a cultural center, if that's what it is. And I would ask for the board to consider, we have filled up the first floor and we are now moving into the second floor for artist space. And I would ask that the board give some consideration to, I think, the two-year time span. I think we're almost a year into it. It may make some sense to extend that out, to give us an opportunity to have a full year of full occupancy, to see what the, the value of that is. So, I, I think that that's something that should be probably considered. On the, let me see here, I think some of these are actually board, board statuses that we have on goals, on economic development. So, I don't know if individual board members want to comment in terms of that. Let me just see if there's anything else on here. And I think that's it for an update on things that have been done recently.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that work. Any board member wanna comment on any of the board's goals and objectives? And if not, I would ask Julie and Janelle to send an update to Charlene and to start thinking about new goals and objectives, which we'll take up as soon as we have a new board.
Can I just ask you a question? If you wanna go to two, two floors, I don't see any problem with doing that if, if it makes sense. The only question I have is, I think you really need to do a very good sources and uses document because if, you know, I could probably rent my house for the summer if I charged a dollar a month. If I charged, you know, $10,000, I probably couldn't. But, so, we have to figure out if what you're doing generates the dollars you need to cover the costs, whatever they are. But not the budgeted costs, the real costs is a big difference, sort of way our accounting works. It's not just the money that goes in that department budget.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Peter?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Okay, moving on to New Business, we have, first up is the Fire Chief Contract Extension. As I mentioned earlier, we started this meeting in executive session where we did agree on a contract extension. We're actually doing, chief had one year left of his extension, of his contract, so we're doing a three-year contract, a new three-year contract. The only provision that we put in there is one extra week's vacation, bringing him from five to six weeks. The contract for this, for the next two years would be, or for the three years would be 2% contractual salary increase plus $2,000, which was done in a wage assessment, correct, Chris?
Mm-hmm.
Bringing the chief's salary up to where it should be. Anything further on that, Chris?
No, Mr. Chairman.
That's covers it. So, congratulations to the chief and thank the chief and his team for all that they do for the town. So, the next up would be a joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority, which, based on new information that we received today, the existing Housing Authority, elected Housing Authority member, which is Bob McCready, will get one more year on the Housing Authority based on a decision that the state made. It seems like it's changed three or four times at this point. But next week, if, if legal counsel agrees with the decision from the state, we will announce or affirm him as the Housing Authority member for one more year. So, I sent out a late email today telling them not to bother to come tonight because we wouldn't be having a joint meeting. So, stay tuned for that for next week. Next up would be Round Cove Funding Era, I guess is what it's listed at. Chris, I'm gonna let you run with this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. During town meeting, we had a presentation on the Round Cove project in which there were three different funding sources that were monies that were gonna be redirected to do Round Cove that were previously used for other harbor-related activities. In that, an error was made in which we referenced a Article 14 of the 2014 Annual Town Meeting and it should've been Article 31. During that town meeting, or during town meeting, a, an individual did ask what that, for a understanding because that Article 14 was related to a ambulance purchase and not related to a harbor purchase. And normally you would have as part of the legislative record, because town meeting is the legislative body, a discussion of what that legislative record actually entails. Because that question came up, the harbor master got up at, at town meeting and very clearly indicated that this was not an ambulance-related article. It was in fact, an article related to a harbor project and that there was monies that were in that because the town had appropriated a certain amount and was successful in receiving additional grant dollars above and beyond what was originally estimated, which had the result of leaving 100, or creating, having 150,000-plus in that account. And where the, the question was brought up to town meeting and the answer was very clear at the town meeting, I did ask the town attorney to weigh in on that and he ruled that because the question was brought up, that the typo, if you would, Article 40, 14 instead of Article 31, that because that was brought up, that town meeting made an informed decision based upon that accurate information. And therefore, the, the specifics of the warrant article saying 14 instead of 31 would be dubbed a Scrivener's Error, but the record was accurate in, in terms of where the funding source came from. So, I know I was requested at town meeting, I believe afterwards, that was that gonna be an issue? Would we have to revote it? So, I did take that step of putting that request in and asking to see from the town attorney. And he did rule that the legislative record was clear and that we can progress forward and that that would not be something that would have to go back to town meeting.
Thank you, Chris. Questions from the board on that? Comments? All set? Anyone in the public? Okay, moving on. Next one is Marijuana Next Steps. We all, Chris, you wanna run with that?
Yeah, I'll do this one as well, Mr. Chairman. I did have an opportunity to, to speak with the town attorney this afternoon and just trying to get a little bit of a sense for, obviously, there was a ballot question for, for marijuana. The town did vote at town meeting to do a moratorium to, to be able to focus on the issue of where can establishments, retail establishments that want to sell marijuana, where can they be located in the town? The state legislature is taking up, there were, in the legislature's standpoint, some potential technical flaws in terms of timing to the law that was passed. None of this has anything to do with the, the recreational use for individuals with the six plants in their home. None of these corrections would be involved in that. But there was a provision in the law potentially for a town to have a moratorium, I'm sorry, not a moratorium, but a ballot question to see if the town wanted to allow for the recreational, retail, recreational sale. And basically, what I found out from the town attorney is some towns, our, our town of Dennis did vote. There is a question though as to whether to have a, to have a town-wide ballot to see if you wanna have marijuana retail sales in the community or not. And town of Dennis voted against doing that. Now, they had that on the town meeting, I'm sorry, they had that at the ballot box. Town council informed me that there is possibly that it may be a town meeting vote as well as a ballot question. So, the legislature is still working out the process that if the town wants to not allow for retail establishments, there may be a mechanism to allow for that. The long and the short of it is, he believes that there'll be a more detailed process laid out for how the town would engage in that. And if it was gonna be at town meeting and/or also at the town ballot, we could accomplish both because the moratorium that was put into effect was put into effect through June 30th, I believe, of next year. So, we would have sufficient time to allow for that ballot question to occur, as well as obviously what, what track that the, the selectmen have put the planning board on in terms of if we are gonna have retail establishments, where in town from a zoning perspective does it allow for that to occur? I did ask him also the question that if, what happens if, you know, the, the town doesn't take any action and basically a, an establishment that wanted to sell marijuana would be considered, without any zoning restrictions, would be considered a retail establishment? So, anywhere that zoning allowed for a retail establishment to operate, then the marijuana could go basically anywhere where that is allowed. So, I think the ability, if the town so desires to have the ability to control the location of it, there will be hopefully a process that we'll be able to lay out for the board to decide how it wants to address that issue, if it wants to address it at all. But that was kind of the updated information that, that I have. I did ask him, I said, were we behind the game here in not doing anything this year? And he thought that with the moratorium kind of giving us an extension to be able to, to do it more deliberately, make sure that we had it accurate, that he thought several towns took the same track we did of let's see where we are and did the moratorium. And now the town can make a more informed decision for next year's town meeting and election.
Thank you, Chris. Janelle, any comments?
I just have a question, Chris, and I don't know if you know the answer, but has there been any question that you've heard about maybe liquor stores actually being the retail, a retail outlet? Kind of your one-stop shop, I guess, for people?
Well, I, I think under the answer that he gave me, if there's no action by the town and a liquor store is a retail establishment doing that, I would believe that they could extend. And, and I think one thing that's kind of interesting, you know, at least for me, I'll, I'll put it that way, that I, I think marijuana sales aren't just about rolling, you know, the marijuana cigarette type or, or selling the, the bags. But, you know, they have a lot, I believe in Colorado, you know, they sell, you know, gummy worm-type things. There is a lot of different mechanisms in which they could, they could sell this product, even baked goods. So, you could see that if it were to be allowed in retail establishments, you could have bakeries that would be offering it, you could have liquor stores that could be offering it. I think it really would. I think it really would open up fairly significantly that opportunity if the town so desired to allow that not to be controlled.
And if that did happen, can the town then limit certain retail establishments? Could we, for instance, say, "Okay, Luke's Liquors can sell marijuana products, but Buc-Ee's can't"?
I think you'd have to accomplish that through zoning if you were gonna pursue that 'cause you do have a use table in zoning and you could say certain uses would allow for that. So, that way, it could be anywhere in town, but you could restrict it by use.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome. Peter?
No, it's gonna evolve. I mean, it's gonna, you gotta keep on top of this one.
Angelo? Julie? Okay, thank you, Chris. Next up is the follow-up letter of support to Senator Seer and Representative Peak regarding the Sacotucket Landside Grant. We did receive an email from our harbor master, John Rendon, with some concern that the grant from the Seaport Economic Council, he applied for a second $1 million grant for the landside renovations and was concerned that it might be held up because we haven't spent the money for the waterside yet. Is that accurate, John?
John Rendon, Harbor Master. Yes, sir. This was, it would dialogue with Ellen Cibula, who is the coordinator for the Seaport grant process. And she, upon receipt of my application, just indicated that there might be some concern because we have a year delay with the grant that was issued for the waterside. And so, I indicated that to the town administrator and I think you had some discussions.
So, after that, Chris and I attended an event with Leslie Sandberg from, or it was Council on Aging event, the volunteer luncheon, but Sarah Peak was there and Leslie Sandberg from Julian Seer's office. We spoke to them about the woes at the harbor, waterside and landside, and both offered to support us and kind of hand-deliver a letter over seeking their support, basically, showing their support. So, before us tonight is a letter that's written that we'll send out and hopefully Julian Seer and Sarah Peak will sign it and walk it over. In addition, Chris, can we do a letter from the board, from the town?
Yeah, absolutely. If the board's comfortable with the, you know, the terminology used, we can just put that letter and maybe you could sign it, Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the board and send it out?
Okay with the board? There's a consensus of the board for that?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else on this? Okay, town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a couple items, certainly ones, two above and beyond the ones that are listed here. But I just wanted to, in terms of the first one here, public notice on the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, they have put out a comment period for the, where the material would be put for the dredge material that would come up as part of the Sacotucket Harbor project that would go off. I think it's, is it Rhode Island Sound that the?
That's correct.
Rhode Island Sound. Rhode Island Sound. So, this, I just wanted to kind of alert the board that the process is continuing and the date for comments would be June 2nd of 17. Potentially, just thinking about it, maybe we could do a letter of support from the board just saying that they was interested in getting that application. Obviously, it's our application as the town to do that work, but I don't know if that would be valuable or not to have in the file.
Sure. That'd probably be a good idea as far as a positive public comment.
A positive, a positive public comment, the importance of the project to the town and so forth. So, we could put something together just to have that on the record 'cause that is for all comments related to that project. The next one is, I just wanted to report that we did go out on the Brooks Library painting project that was, went out and bid. The lowest bidder came in at 630,000. The amount that we had available was 490,000, so well over the amount. The one thing that we were attempting to accomplish, based upon the comments that we had received from the firm, engineering firm or architectural firm, was to do the entire project. Now that we realize that we cannot do the entire project, we will break the project up into, at least for bid purposes, a base bid with add alternates. So, we will probably do the front of the building as a base bid, an add alternate for the side, and another add alternate for the back to try to get a sense for what the cost will be. I think we, I did have a meeting with members of the library trustees just to kind of talk about this and I think that there is a strong desire on the library trustees' part to do some of the painting. I think one of the reasons for the bids coming in so high were probably two reasons. One, we have to paint during the summertime because you don't wanna have paint try to cure overnight when the temperature goes down below 50 degrees. So, I think it is important to do that work. And unfortunately for Cape Cod, I mean, that's kind of prime time for people coming down. So, that, I think, is a, one of the key components. So, the time of year, I think, is a component. The second is that we put into the bid that we estimate the amount of wood that would have to be replaced at 20%. So, when they go through, they'll find wood rot and have to change those boards out. And I think where there's a certain level of uncertainty to that, bidders generally bid a little bit high. So, I think if we're able to go out and do some of the bid work and actually see what that actual experience is, if we're not able to do all three sides, which it appears that we probably won't be able to do all three sides, but we'll get a better sense for if it's 20% or if it's 10% or 5%, I think that experience could be potentially helpful for the bid purposes. But that is something that if we don't have enough money to do it all, then they would have to potentially come back with an additional article to do the other section. So, not good news, but stuff happens and we're trying to deal with that piece. On the next item I have is on the tax lien auction. So, we have an advertisement going out this week, May 18th, for the auction of June 6th. We did, as of, I think it was Friday, we have collected $115,000 in revenue. So, we have a fair amount of people that are responding. And I think it's very, very important to just let people know that there's two ways to kind of not have your property get into the auction. Would be to come up with a payment plan or to obviously pay the bill. So, we have had some people that have come up with the money and paid the bill, hence that's the collection of 115,000. And we have had some people that have paid a portion of the bill but arranged for a payment plan. And the payment plan is something that can be done directly with the town treasurer. So, it's something I would encourage people, you don't need an attorney, just sit down with the town treasurer, figure out the past due balances and see if there's a way to just make some payment, good faith payments, and get on to a payment plan to get up to date. So, and just in terms of that process, doing a tax lien auction, the town basically collects the tax money from an auction, and this will be an open auction, so it'll be open to any bidders. There are certain companies that deal in this, that they pay for the back taxes, so the town collects those back taxes and then they take the town's lien position. Obviously, I think they take the town's lien position for the purposes of trying to obtain the, to obtain the properties. I would say, just I had a couple of direct inquiries myself and some, in some cases, it was families that inherited property from others. So, there were three or four siblings that had it and the families couldn't decide who was gonna pay the bill. I would really suggest in that circumstance, please figure out something and come up with a payment plan because I don't think that, you know, the town just wants to collect the tax money. We're owed the tax money, the town just wants to collect the tax money. But I do think that in the private sector, if people are in that situation, please, you know, communicate with the town treasurer before the June 6 sale to see what you can do to get into a situation where you're in compliance. And none of these properties, none of the properties, all these properties are over a year in delinquency. So, this isn't about someone that just went delinquent fairly recently.
Chris, I'm gonna just open this up for questions and discussions. I had a little bit of email correspondence today and a few phone calls once this was read in the packet, so... I guess my first question is, out of that 5 million that we say we're owed, what percentage is that's actually taxes and what percentage is fees? And is it above 50/50?
I think it's probably a little bit heavier on the fees, probably more than 50%, but I think it is reasonably, reasonably close. A lot of these, some of these, I think one of them, the taxes haven't been paid like since 1969 or something. So, some of these really go back quite a ways.
Okay. I wanna make it clear, too, that this isn't something that the Board of Selectmen has endorsed. I mean, this is something that falls under the tax collector. This isn't, we don't really have a choice, right, Chris?
Yeah, that's correct. This one is not, even as an administrator, this isn't within my authority. Certainly, I think it's important and I know, you know, people say, "How do we make sure that we collect taxes and not have to go out and do overrides and debt exclusion votes?" And, you know, certainly, one way to do that is to have as high a possible collection rate that we can. So, I think that this is a tool that can be used. So, you know, I certainly do think that the treasurer-collector is right in doing this and I have been supportive of her in this effort in order to make sure that we maximize the collections that are allowable under law.
So, you know, if we've collected 150,000 based on a newspaper article and a few mentions at Board of Selectmen meetings, are we certain that we've made every attempt here and this is the right decision to start taking people's properties? You know, one of the emails today specified that it's a 16% interest for the third-party investor that purchases. It's normally a 16%. And if we go ahead with tax liens, in addition to their mortgage, if they have a mortgage on it, they're gonna be paying a 16% interest. So, what protection is out there? How do we know that these, how do we as a board know? And how do we as a town know that these aren't elderly people that can't pay their taxes or young people that are afraid to come before a board or afraid to call a tax collector and say, "Can I make a payment plan"? What homework has been done? We really have had one presentation from a third-party person and now we're going to a tax auction within a year. I think it's much less than a year, actually, whereas we've had a building boarded up in West Harwich for 20 years and we haven't made it. So, what is the rush on this? Is there a reason why we're doing this so quickly and have we made every attempt at collecting?
Yeah, I believe, like I said, every one of these that are on the list are on the list because every notice that we provided for a year hasn't been, hasn't yielded any results. So, for a year, and there's a formal process that people get notices when they're delinquent, people get notice that when it goes into a tax lien. So, you know, in my mind, this is really a, just a continuing process for people that haven't made any arrangements to address the issue. And in terms of, as I've indicated, if someone, you know, wants to come up and meet with the treasurer-collector, I mean, this is something that the treasurer-collector and the individual makes the payment plan to try to address that issue. It's by statute, Mr. Chairman, that it's 16%. So, you know, I always encourage people, you know, if you can, you know, get the taxes paid because the 16% is much higher than what you could do if you refinanced your house or anything of that nature. So, I do think it's important. And to my knowledge, I know I've had discussions with the town treasurer that we have no desire to put anybody out on the street, per se. So, she was, I thought, sensitive to that request and we weren't intentionally targeting, certainly weren't intentionally targeting people to put out on the street. But many of these are people that have secondary homes or these are homes that are used for, used for summer rentals and so on. So, these are more properties that are geared in that realm and we have not intentionally, certainly have not intentionally targeted, you know, widows or people of that nature. And if people do come in for counseling or to make a payment plan, you know, we can certainly guide them as well to the different vehicles that are available to folks through the assessing office to, you know, try to help them in any need in terms of those that are, you know, truly in financial distress. But I think this is a reasonable approach and, you know, I know the board is concerned about raising taxes and this is a way, Mr. Chairman, to make sure that we are collecting money and collecting taxes in the most efficient way possible.
Thanks for that, Chris. Who vets this list and who is the, besides Amy, who goes through this list and says, you know, "We could pick properties that are four years out"? I mean, has anyone vetted this list so that some of these ones that are only a year out? You know, it's mentioned in here that Harwich is a village where the village takes care of one of its own. I'm a little concerned that we're going a little too quickly on this and I don't support it at all. I know it's not my decision, but I wanna be, make it publicly clear that I don't support this at all. I don't believe people should be able to not pay their taxes, but I'm not sure that this process really allows the town as a whole to see, you know, special circumstances. And again, I'm not sure that some people that have financial trouble will call a town and make a request and that's what I'm afraid of, not the person that has 14 properties and just doesn't wanna pay until they're forced to pay. But once these are auctioned, they're gone and there really is no recourse for these people. So, Janelle?
Why is, why is this one person's decision?
It's by statute.
State?
State statute, yeah.
That's too bad.
Julie?
I have multiple questions on it, too, and I understand that it's not our decision, but I go back to the point of how the lists are vetted, but also... So, these monies would come to us at some point when the property transferred, if and when. Then I have concerns about not only do we maybe have people who, you know, are under a financial hardship and are afraid to come forward, but also those people are not going, you know, okay, they can make a payment plan, but, you know, they're not gonna be able to get an equity loan on their house, no more than an elderly person in a lot of scenarios could get an equity loan on their house. Then we say we're mailing the bills, but we also don't know that, you know, if they're elderly and they have any kind of issue and they don't have any support system, we don't know that they're even understanding what they're getting in the mail or in fact, are they even really getting it? So, I have all of those concerns and I, and to Mike's point, you know, what's alarming is that once these properties are gone, that there is no recourse. And, you know, to me, these are, these are properties that are only going up in value. So, I don't really know how we're totally, I understand we need money, trust me, but I don't know that this is the most sound fiscal decision by the town when those properties are only gonna increase in value. The overall, the monies are gonna come back to us through the transfer of property and if we're talking about land, that we could not figure out who's responsible for that land? Is that something we could look at in terms of eminent domain? These are all questions I have. So, I'm not comfortable with this process at all.
Angela?
Well, one of the things that this town, excuse me, town has is an unbelievable of owners' unknown land. I think we have more than any, percentage-wise, than anybody in, on Cape Cod or even in the state. And because it was a habit there, people just didn't bother to register property and they didn't pay, wanted to pay taxes. So, I think there is a group out there that deserves to have a problem. But I also concur that there's probably a group that has problems. What would happen if you asked the treasurer, she could divide this process into a couple of parts to give everybody a feeling of what's going to happen? Which I think is what Mike is, Mike is asking for. What happens if you say, "For this round, we're only gonna do houses that are, have been not paying their taxes for four years, three years, five years, I don't wanna propose a term, and let the people who are one or two years watch for a while to understand what's going on"? I think if somebody's not paid for four years or so, whatever that number is, it's pretty sure that they either can't, don't wanna pay, have forgotten the property or whatever. But maybe we can avoid the one- or two-year mistake issue? Is that possible or do you have to do everything?
Well, again, it's the treasurer's call. I mean, certainly, I can have a discussion with her. I know I said, you know, asked her definitively, "Was it one year"? And she said, "Yes, no one's on that list that hasn't paid their taxes for one year." I do think it's important that, at least, you know, I've done this in a couple of, well, I've done this in other towns of trying to collect additional money. And, you know, one of the questions that I always ask is, you know, 98% of the people plus pay their taxes in a timely fashion. And how much exception are we gonna make for two? And how much exception are we going to make for two percent? And if there is less than two percent, and there is, talking about, you don't need to get a home equity loan, there is a tax deferral process that already is on the books, that can already be done. So, trust me, you know, this is a hard business to be in, being, you know, the tax man. But I think it's important that there are mechanisms for those people that truly are in financial desperate need to have opportunities to alleviate that. But, you know, people have to come forward. People have to, you know, make some effort to kind of communicate with us to work that out. So, I mean, I can ask, you know, what the difference is between the one year versus the four year and see, but, you know, in terms of an equity question, why is it fair for ninety-eight percent of the people to pay in a timely fashion and for two percent to be given a, it's not a grace period because the sixteen percent kicks in once you don't pay. So that's by, again, by statute. So, you know, why is it good for two years versus four years? So, you know, I think that's a question certainly I can bring up to the treasurer, and we can look at that, you know, or I can suggest that to her. But, you know, I would just, you know, really be sensitive, I guess, that if someone is in desperate need, that two percent or less than two percent, you know, please come forward and we'll help you find a way to do it. But doing nothing, I mean, someone that hasn't paid taxes since nineteen sixty-nine, you know, is kind of snubbing their nose at the town, and I don't believe that that's right either, so.
I was just trying to suggest something that would give the people in town a longer period to deal with it. That's all I was doing. I think it's important for people to pay their taxes.
Peter first.
I don't want to pay mine.
You know, I think Chris brings up a good point in the fact that, for those that don't pay their taxes for whatever reason, those folks that do pay their taxes in a timely manner are carrying them, basically, because the town budget still has to be satisfied, no matter what. And so if, you know, two percent or whatever aren't paying their taxes, then when you do this whole thing for a budget, the money's coming from somewhere. I think there needs to be a mechanism, though, where there's some personal contact with the property owner before an action is taken. Unless they're barricaded in their house in New York or something and refuse to talk to somebody, you know, the sheriff or somebody. But it just seems to me that the tax collector, whoever's working in that department or, you know, the organization that would do this, would need to actually go handshake somebody or something to say, okay, we want you to understand the situation. You know, we spent twenty minutes discussing it. I want you to know the ramifications of this or that, and that the town has these plans or a plan, you know, to help you defer things or whatever. But it's important that you work the process, if you will. And at least have that contact with the person or individual, whatever, as the process goes forward. You can't, I don't think, and I don't think the intent here is to be the cold-hearted, you know, here's the town of Harwich tax collector, whatever, whoever this gets assigned to, we're just taking it and that's it, we don't care what you say, you know, et cetera.
Thank you, Peter. I'm going to let Leo, Leo was up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow evening, we're going to have two new selectmen sitting up at this board. I would respectfully suggest that you re-agenda this issue and you have someone come in from the tax office to actually explain to you the process. It's my understanding, and it may be wrong, but it's my understanding that the town has to go through this action. Many a times, when you put things up for an auction, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be sold to a third party. It doesn't prohibit the town from bidding in and retaining the property also, or moving one step closer to tax title. Selectmen Law just said that we have a lot of properties unknown out there. Some of them are desirable pieces of land in which this town may want to take action on and acquire through tax title. So I would respectfully request that you, you know, with your two new selectmen sitting up there, have a good educational seminar on the actual tax-taking process. And quite frankly, I'm kind of, I'm kind of with Chris on this one. I pay a lot of tax bills and, you know, sometimes very close to paying my tax bills before I go out and buy anything else. So I don't have a lot of sympathy for people who have been notified numerous times, are aware of it. And I would really want to find out how much it's going to cost to send a town employee to upstate New York to shake someone's hand who hasn't paid their tax bill since nineteen sixty-three? And is it really, really something that we should be doing? Again, I think there's a lot of education here on the actual process and what position the town is in when we talk about taking properties for tax title. Because I'm under the impression that this is one of the first steps we need to do. And we, as a town, would be bidding for those at that auction. I may be wrong. I know that's how a lot of property is acquired. When a bank forecloses, the bank doesn't own the property until they have a foreclosure auction. At the auction, the bank bids money in and usually ends up winning the property back. So I just would think it'd be a good thing to re-agenda and have someone come in who knows what they're talking about, instead of me, who pays his taxes.
Thank you, Leo. The reason I, the reason why this is opened up right now is because May eighteenth is the advertising date, which doesn't allow us another meeting and two new board members. As far as the buying of the properties, I don't believe, Chris, we have a mechanism to have anyone at the auction to buy these properties, do we?
Yeah, that's one that I believe if we go through the tax foreclosure process itself, the town can then end up with the property. I know in my last community, I did do that, went and attended a meeting in Boston to do that. But I think Leo's point is, you know, well-taken that there are some properties that the town may want to consider, that it may want to go through the tax-taking process as opposed to selling off the tax liens. Anyone that has owners unknown or any issues that were, that tax lien companies don't believe they can obtain, those are not going to be on the list. Also, anyone that's in bankruptcy is not going to be on the list. I mean, there are going to be ones that are going to be excluded from the list because, well, they have bankruptcy protection or what have you. So it was three hundred and six properties on the list. I don't, I didn't get the, I didn't bring my email with me for how many are actually on there. I think it's closer to like a hundred and fifty. I think it's about half that are actually going to be out there. So it is a lesser number. But we can have a tax attorney come in and kind of go through that process a little bit more clearly in terms of it. But this is a lien holder's position that the town gets out of the lien position and sells the lien position to a private entity for them to then engage in the collections.
So with that, Chris, can you ask the tax collector if we can delay this? And do we get some more information and look at all of our options?
Again, Mr. Chairman, it's her call.
That's why I just said ask.
I think the question would be, you know, is who's on that list? And are there ones that we want to exclude from the list? But to put in, you know, three hundred, three hundred properties into the paper, a hundred and fifty properties, I mean, it's an expensive proposition. So, you know, if we go and have to redo that, now we're going to increase our costs. But again, action can be taken right up until, obviously, I don't encourage people to go in June fifth, the day before, to make arrangements. But what I will do, Mr. Chairman, is see if the, if we can get the, our financial, the attorney that helps us with these to come out and kind of walk through the process and kind of explain what those options are.
Julie?
So, just out of curiosity, the property that you're referencing that they haven't paid since, say, nineteen sixty-seven, do we know what type of title search or anything was done on that? Do we know, in fact, that the person that we're mailing the bills to is truly the owner? Do we have that kind of information? Or do we just say they haven't paid and we mail the bills and nobody ever pays?
Yeah, that's probably a better question for her to answer, quite honestly. I know that in some cases, you know, we probably do know the person, but as I alluded to, I think sometimes it's a question of a probate question. Someone had it, and then the kids haven't settled up to figure out who wants it, so it stays in limbo. So we know that there was, you know, John Smith and Mary Smith owned it, and they willed it to four kids, and the kids haven't taken any action. So we know those four kids and why they haven't taken any action. I mean, certainly, sometimes you get people just don't want to pay, so they leave it in limbo for a period. But we can see, we can have Mr. Coppola, Attorney Coppola, try to come to a meeting before the June sixth auction to kind of walk through that process. But we are talking about a hundred and fifty properties out of over ten thousand, so.
I'm just going to reiterate my position. I'm a hundred percent against this in this timeframe. I think we need a lot more information, and we should be looking at this. It's odd to me that we have vacant buildings and orphaned properties of our own that we're not concerned about, that we'll leave boarded up for twenty years, but we want to rush this property, rush this auction. So I'd respectfully ask that you ask, the town administration, ask that this be delayed, for a period of time whilst we get this extra information. Janelle?
I'm with you, a hundred percent behind, not behind this. And also, I would like to propose and question whether we, as a board, can make a policy that Amy has to follow before she does all of this, from our interests, from the town's interests, you know, not going beyond the state statute. But we should really investigate that, too.
Chris? Is that possible?
I'll have to research it, Mr. Chairman. I mean, you're asking me to come up with a system to potentially circumvent state law, and I have to think about that carefully with the town attorney.
Thank you. Anything else on this?
Just a little piece of history. Five, six years ago, or whenever, we, this town spent a lot of money chasing after owners unknown property and discovered something. You keep on tracking it down, you pay people a lot of money to find out who the owner is. And then, guess what? They then pop up and they pay for the property. Or they let you take it, and then they show up and take it back from you, like we just had in the northern part of the town. So there are a lot of people out there who are doing things like that. I understand your concern, but not everybody on that list of three hundred are probably, are in trouble. So it's.
I assume it could be a small percentage, but it's a percentage. Peter, you?
I just, have you done with that topic? I just asked, when the town administration is done, can we just go back to Brooks Library painting for a minute?
Sure.
When it's done, I think.
Yep. We all done with this topic? Okay, back to the paint.
I do have other items, but we can go back to the paint before.
Oh, at the end, sure. Go ahead, Chris.
So I did include in the package a letter from Mr. Earl Beardsley. Just, I kind of wanted just to give the board a flavor for the type of other inquiries. He wanted to try to rent a space in the Harwich Middle School for a STEM, a technology museum. I have learned subsequent to that that he did ask to have his own building, so I did meet with him, and then he subsequently met. I believe he met with Carolyn or chatted with Carolyn on the phone. And he is looking for a, an independent building to do that, potentially. Maybe we can show him the West Harwich School if he wanted to do a museum as a location. So he wanted to have a standalone facility. So just to give the board some flavor for some elements that we do receive. A couple other items, just, I did receive a request from the water superintendent to send a letter in regards to the Water Management Act for registration, just a process to give us more ability to kind of control the renewals. And this is something apparently the town did probably ten years ago, and they're seeking to do the same. DEP is trying to have a different process. I will put that letter in the package for the board to kind of, to look at. And then publicly, we did receive from Department of Transportation a notice on a couple of different things regarding roadway work. I just want to let people know, starting tomorrow at eight P.M., there is going to be some roadway work. All this work is on Route Six. So they're doing median delineators, which are those, the reflective things, they're going in and updating those. So that work is planned on doing. It is in eight, eight P.M. to two thirty A.M., so there will be some detours. But the plan scheduled to close Route Six from Exit Twelve to the Orleans Rotary is tomorrow night to the seventeenth. So from the sixteenth to the seventeenth of May, a subsequent closure of Route Six between Exits Eleven and Twelve on the seventeenth and eighteenth. So just, people may want to be advised in the evening, eight P.M. to two thirty A.M., that there will be, and just for, the fire chief's still in the audience, that the emergency vehicles will be allowed to access Route Six as needed, so they will not have to adhere to that, the detour route. And then also, we received a similar notice, but this is all along Route Six from Sandwich to Eastham, so obviously, along the section of Harwich here, we would be included. That they're going to do fabrication and installation of ground-mounted guide and traffic signs along the section of Route Six. I believe they're complying with the existing, how they've done it, they're just updating the signs. I know we had received the request, and I think we had officially responded that we did not want the big overhead ones. And I don't believe that this is anything related to that. This is just replacement of existing ground-mounted ones. So that work is going to be done. Kind of interesting that they're going to be doing this over the summer, but Monday through Friday from seven A.M. to three thirty P.M. And that work would not require any lane closures, but they are contemplating doing lane closures on Sunday through Thursday from ten P.M. to five A.M., so kind of the overnight hours. If they're going to do any lane closures, they would do it overnight, and that there'd be no lane closures allowed at any time on Fridays. The estimated duration of the work would be June through September twenty-ninth. So just to let people know that they are going to be doing some maintenance on the Mid-Cape during that period of time. And the overnight is when they anticipate that they would always maintain at least one lane passing at all times. But just for folks that do use the Mid-Cape overnight, there is a potential for some traffic delays. And then I just, I don't always get an opportunity to be able to say, but I just wanted to take the opportunity here. I've been here with the town for three and a half years, and I've had the pleasure of working with Angelo as the chairman for one year, and then also a year with Peter. And certainly, I appreciate your service. I appreciate your relationship to me in the professional way. And both of you have been personally very thoughtful and very friendly to me and to my family. And I just wanted to express publicly my deep appreciation for your support in my time with the town. And I wish you guys enjoyment in your next ventures from going from the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes my comments this evening, Mr. Chairman, other than any follow-up in regards to the Brooks painting. Peter?
Just on the Brooks Library, I think the town minister, I mentioned that the numbers are far and away above what was estimated, I believe. And so my question is, if those are the numbers that did get to complete the project as it was presented to the voters who voted for this, which, you know, the voters expected to get those three sides done, if you will. If now we're going to get into a situation where we might only do part of it, is that really the project that they voted for? You know, at some point, you've got to complete it. And do they want to spend, you know, almost three quarters of a million dollars to do that? There's something wrong here that I think the board, you know, going forward is going to have to think about, if you will. You know, maybe the business list wasn't extensive enough. Maybe we didn't have enough local people bidding on it. Maybe the architect really doesn't know what, you know, what is involved here. I mean, he made estimates and whatnot, and this seems to be far and away, way above what that is. We can talk about, oh, it would be done in the summer or whatever, and, you know, blah, blah, blah. But these are significant companies, I assume, who are in the business of doing these types of major projects, if you will. So I just caution you, I mean, it's, you know, how much money do you spend on a building, quite frankly, when you get all done?
Thank you. Any other comments on that? Selectmen's report, Angelo?
Don't have a report, but just a question. Should we try and post those, that information about the highway being closed?
Sure, we can put that on the website.
On the website or the front door or something? Because I can just see people head in one direction and try and get home.
Julie?
I have only to report that the Monomoy Booster Club, the Monomoy Regional High School Booster Club, made ninety-three hundred dollars in that mattress sale, so that was good news. And I attended the play Wrinkles at the Harwich Junior Theater, and it was excellent.
Thank you. Janelle?
It is on the website, first of all, Angelo, the road work.
Is it?
Yep, very first.
Oh, good.
Column. I also just publicly would like to thank Angelo and Peter. You have guided me the last two years since I am a newbie, and I appreciate it. And I'm going to miss you, although I will be calling you.
I hear the senior board member, so.
Yeah, right.
Who were the senior board member? Yeah.
I want to say thank you, too. I've only had a year, but you've been excellent. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Peter?
A couple things. One is, first of all, you mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, tomorrow is called Election Day, and we have significant number of items on the ballot that are very important beyond the town elections, if you will, but debt exclusions, capital exclusions, et cetera, that need to get the support of the voters if they see fit, some very important things. And at the end of the ballot, you need your patience, because there are some bylaw things that are in there that I'm sure a lot of people forgot a long time ago, but it's a requirement to go through and just vote on that. And if you're going to do anything, vote yes, and just, you know, because those were passed at town meeting in 2016, and they do need to get through the ballot, I guess, with at least one, you know, positive vote, if you will. Couple other things, we talked a few times about sending a letter to our congressional delegation regarding the potential for wastewater funding if an infrastructure plan comes about. Haven't seen that, I think you guys need to push to get that done. It shouldn't be that difficult. The other thing is, Route 28 from Harwich Port over to Sacotucket Harbor, my understanding was that the next time that the state was going to mill the road and do some work there, that we're going to get consideration for the sidewalk on the south side. I noticed last week they milled the road, at least on the, on the east side, if you will, south side, if you will.
Yep.
And it's now been paved, and I don't know whether that was just an intention to do that one side, or they're really going to do the whole thing, or what's going on.
I think that was natural gas, that was a utility. I don't believe that was the state that was doing that work.
Okay, so I guess I would just say, keep on top of that one, because it's a very important project. You talk about economic development and whatnot, but I think that's a big thing to have in the future. So even if we contact them again and just say, you know, "We want to remind you". So with that, that's the end of my report, and I want to thank everybody for your time. I encourage you, obviously, you're going to keep going, I thank you for jumping into the fray, if you will. And anybody else out there, whoever thinks about, you know, wanting to be on, you know, sit up at this table, I'm happy to talk to them. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Angelo. Motion to adjourn?
So moving. We're out of here.
Wait a second, hats, guys.
And that's it, huh? Just like that?
No, it's good, huh?